The meeting will begin in one minute.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Are there any special intentions? Seeing those special intentions, Councilwoman Dunn, would you lead us in prayer?
May we all bow our heads. Father, in the name of Jesus, Lord, as we come to you this hour in the morning, we just want to tell you thank you for all the blessings that you have restored upon us. Lord, I pray today for the mayor, for the police chief, the fire chief, the council, the administration, to the people that live in and around and about Kenner, dear God. Lord, you have made it a safe place. You have made it a place where we can call home and that we interact with one another. We just want to tell you thank you. And now, dear God, as we get into the business of carrying on the things that need to be done in Kenner, we pray that you would give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding that the things we do will be done for the betterment of this whole city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Mayor Glaser, if you'd leave us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B-14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. We have a quorum today with Councilmember Brennan is absent. Mr. Chairman, we have a request to change the order of business to take Item 18A at the beginning of the meeting. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to change the order of business to take Item 18A at the beginning of the meeting. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0 to change the order of business. 6-0, I'm so sorry. Item 18 is new business. Item 18A, at the request of Councilmember Wilmot, a presentation by Mr. Kevin Dolleah of the Louis Armstrong New Orleans Airport.
First, I would like to thank State Representative Joe Stagni. He passed a very important state concurrent resolution, Number 58, at this past regular session wherein he asked that the New Orleans Aviation Board educate the public as to hurricane preparedness and emergency events. Of course, the city of Kenner and the parish of Jefferson were negatively impacted in the recent past. Accordingly, State Representative Stagni asked that the airport director, Mr. Kevin Dolleah, appear before us and give a presentation. In addition, we understand that Mr. Dolleah has added information, it's good news regarding the airport. Mr. Dolleah, we are honored and privileged to have you here today, and if you will, present us. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, and thank you for inviting us here today, and thank you for accommodating us with the change in order so that we could come up and present right away. We really, really value the relationship we've had with the city of Kenner, Jefferson Parish over the years, myself on two different tours of duty, if you will, at the New As we grow, it puts more stress on different systems, and we were, in fact, in May, when we were advocating for needs we have in our capital program with different members of our delegation in Washington, DC, we also took the opportunity to strongly advocate for needs, financial support needs that the city of Kenner has for upgrading the sewerage infrastructure here. And we know as we move forward into the future, it puts more stress on systems like that. So we feel, as a part of advocating for us, we should be pushing and supporting and trying to get support for those needs as well. And it's how we've always functioned and operated, and I just wanted to say that on the front end. It's, you know, there's been some thought or conversation of lack of communication, and that's just not the way I function or operate, and not the way my team operates. We have always been responsive when called and meet and discuss issues and work through resolutions with our neighbors in our attempt over the years at being a good neighbor. So that will continue going forward. Also, what you'll get today is a briefing from our Deputy Director of Operations. It's with trying to accomplish two things. The resolution from the state asks that we come on an annual basis and brief the council as to our hurricane preparedness and various issues related to that, and your invitation was specific to the pump station update on the status of it today. So what we're attempting to do is accomplish both. So we kind of have the pump station wrapped into a hurricane season briefing. Our preparations for the hurricane season on an annual basis, our hurricane preparedness plan is pretty comprehensive, and it touches every aspect of our operation. It lays out clear determination, there's things our plan lays out that we're supposed to do. And so we're well-prepared going in, and Walter's going to step through some of that. And not going to bore you with a whole lot of detail, but really want to step you through some of how we prepare for events during the hurricane season. We also have a longstanding agreement with the city of Kenner that we house up to, for any event, a hurricane event particularly, that will house up to 100 Kenner public vehicles in our parking garage at the south terminals, and be in upper levels and out of harms way, and three fire department vehicles on site, and up to 10 fire department personnel can take shelter in our aircraft rescue and firefighting facilities at the airport. So that's another piece of cooperation over the years, and again, that's going to continue going forward, and I see it getting even stronger going forward, and a lot more communication going forward. So with that backdrop and setup as to the overall plan, I'll ask Walter to come up and kind of step through. It's not a ton of slides, but it's good information, and you'll also, through these slides, be updated on the status of the pump station as well.
Thank you. Mr. Walter. Walter Kragowski, correct?
Correct, Kragowski.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, councilmembers, city officials. Walter Kragowski, Deputy Director of Operations and Maintenance at the airport. As the Director Dolleah indicated, we do have a comprehensive hurricane preparedness plan, and it's not just a plan that just sits on a shelf and collects dust. It's a living and breathing document that we review annually in anticipation of the hurricane season so that we are refreshing ourselves and making sure that that document stays current to all the levels of operation. One of the things with our plan is we go on a Hurcon basis level or a hurricane condition basis, and it's sort of what is also used by the military. So instead of doing an H minus 18 or H minus X number of hours, our plan gives that flexibility, and is what you see here is, we're in that constant state of hurricane preparedness with a Hurcon 5 level that starts from June 1st, lasts through the whole hurricane season. It's our preparedness. As those tropical storm force winds start reaching the coast, then that's the timeline, and it starts triggering down. So we'll go into Hurcon 4 level, starting at 72 hours before. Then we go to a Hurcon 3 level at 48 hours before. And just want to stop here for a minute, because usually in the Hurcon 3 level is when we start seeing a lot of airlines starting to pull back service. Then we go to Hurcon 2 level, which is that 24 hours before, and then finally Hurcon 1, which is 12 hours before. So that really is our triggering events and gives us that latitude, because as we all know and living it, and we all hear about, you know, how there's acceleration, and so we think that utilizing this is actually appropriate for our hurricane planning efforts. Just to touch a little bit on some highlights on that plan, not to inundate you, but as Director Dolleah had indicated, that plan gives specific guidance to our departments and what they should be doing. There's checklists in there so that we, you know, are making sure that at this time we're sending our crews out to secure facilities. We're going and making sure that we're topping off our fuel, we're topping off all our equipment, we're positioning the recovery materials that we do have in our warehouse, we're positioning it in strategic locations, whether it's on the south side or a north campus or in other areas of the campus. It also identifies the timeline for when we will implement our own emergency operations center. We have a hurricane, we call it the Airport Hurricane EOC, that would be activated, and then that gives specific direction to those NIM sections or the National Incident Management Control Systems. It tells those section chiefs and those teams under those sections what they need to be doing, because as we transition from a normal operation into a hurricane, that's when then all the department control then goes to the emergency manager and that NIM's infrastructure. Another thing that we do is, as a storm is approaching and it's going to affect the greater New Orleans area, I personally start a communication flow and a lot of meeting cadence with all those internal stakeholders, because we need to hear from the airlines, and the airlines need to hear from us, like what's going on, so we can actually make sure that we're all in lockstep to make sure that we're securing the facility. So it's the airlines, it's TSA, it's FAA, it's our concessionaires, and making sure, because the ultimate goal, and we all understand that, at the airport is the recovery. How quick can you get that airport open, because that is a valuable asset, and the site is for bringing all that recovery effort, federal, state, all of them are going to want to bring all that into the region through the airport. So our airport preparations that we've done this year, like we do all year, or we do in anticipation of a hurricane, is we've already done our materials management, we've done our inventories, we know that we have the information and the documents and the supplies that are needed for a hurricane. We have a ride-out crew of over 60 staff that remain on the airport. Usually, they'll come in no later than 12 hours before the storm, and they stay until we get the recovery and we're able to start bringing all our other staff.
Leadership as well.
And I was going to say, as Director Dolleah says, even the director is a part of that ride-out crew, myself and the executive leadership team at the airport, we don't just say, oh, it's just for, you know, lower-level staff. We're all in it together, and, you know, I'm not above picking up the hammer and nails and boarding up stuff, and I've had to do that over many hurricanes that we have all experienced over the number of years. The airport also does our generators, and we test them weekly. The one thing about moving to the new terminal facility, which is a benefit, is that our terminal at the north is 100% generator backup, so we can run that whole facility, and we have the power with our generators to keep that facility up and running. So again, if we, you know, have the recovery efforts that need to come in, that our airport is able to do so. And then our south campus is still only just emergency essential, that's basically, it's life safety systems that are generator backup there. Our emergency operations center, that equipment is tested on a regular basis, and then, like the Director had indicated, we do partner, like when John and Doug Dote had the meeting in May for hurricane preparedness that the mayor convened, we have representatives there, we do that, we participate in all those kind of regional briefings that are necessary and that we're asked on. So just to talk about the stormwater pump station, it's a very small pump station that we have, it's on the northwest corner of the airport property, and it only has about four, it only has four pumps, and it's designed to mitigate airport stormwater runoff. It's been operational for the past eight years, and it was constructed and launched and commenced in 2017. The pumping capacity that we have at the airport pump station is only 600 cubic feet per second, or CFS, which represents about 2% of the Jefferson Parish pumping capacity. And according to the parish website, the total pumping capacity on the east bank of Jefferson Parish, which includes Kenner, is 30,000 CFS, and there are specifically two pump stations located in the Kenner area, which is the Kenner Line Pump Station, or the Parish Line, I should say, pump station at 12, a little over 1,200 CFS, and then the Duncan, which is at 4,800 CFS. The stormwater pump station, I can tell you, is fully operational. The airport has now the manual capability to turn on pumps if necessary, because it is an automated pump station, that's how it was constructed and built, but we did add that extra capacity now and abilities to then manually put on pumps. So if there is an issue with the automation system, we can trigger that on. During the last two significant rainfall events that we've had here in Kenner, as we all know, one was on April 21st, when it was over about 4.33 inches of rain, and it was in that three-hour window, and then June 14th, where we had a little over 3.8 inches of rainfall, and that was in a shorter period. The pump station operated as intended and normally, and we did not see any issues with that. We do, during the hurricane season, we do visual inspections of our pump station, both inside and looking at the facilities, and then externally and making sure, like all the pipes, the discharge pipes, that there's no leaks, no issues with those. The generators and the canal rakes are tested on a weekly basis, and then if we do have and find that we are going to have a big storm event, we do have staff that monitor that facility, and then the Jefferson Parish also, through the SCADA system, they have the visibility to see what pumps are operating at the pump station. Just to wrap up, because I know you have a very busy meeting today, but I'm sure a lot of the constituents and a lot of questions are always asked of, well, when does the airport commercial service, when does the airport, do they close during a hurricane, and what goes on with that? The last commercial flights are always dictated by the airlines, the airlines make those decisions. But in general, what we always tell folks is that usually at H minus 18, because they go off the hurricane hour, usually around H minus 18, or when tropical storm force winds are 40 miles per hour sustained, and it's the tropical, not just the regular gusts, but when it's sustained, that's usually when we start seeing all that commercial service start scaling back, and we start seeing airlines starting to pull some of those flights. TSA does have staff, and they do have staff that will remain all the way until the last commercial flight does leave, so they have a commitment, the federal government has a commitment, that they will continue to screen for any of those flights that are still going out. And then unless infrastructure is damaged, the airport is not closed. And when I say the airport is not closed, while we don't have a lot of people, and we are not a public shelter where you can come in, but we keep that airfield open, so if there is a carrier or someone that needs to be in that airspace and that is able to land, that they are able to do so. I mean, we will close our terminal facilities only to ticketed passengers, and certainly that aspect, the terminal operations, kind of scale back down, and that aspect closes, but the airfield remains open so that it can be the site for whatever recovery efforts or operations, and we only close that if that infrastructure is damaged. So with that, that kind of ends our presentation. If there's any kind of questions that myself or the Director can answer.
Yes. First off, again, I appreciate both of y'all coming in, and it's very nice to have y'all come to a Kenner council meeting, and we hope to see you again in the near future. I would like to ask, as far as Mr. Doug Dote, he's our emergency preparedness director here in Kenner, and I'm sure y'all have contact information, y'all can contact one another as need be through any of these events, and I think that's
We've had to help each other out during many hurricane events in the past.
Exactly, exactly.
I recall one while ago.
So, yeah, I think that's, it's critical, of course, and I know y'all do keep in contact, especially with him. He's on top of his game here in Kenner, and he keeps us all informed as to these activities as they arise. Any other members have questions? Yes, Councilwoman?
Thank you, Council President. I was just, I just wanted to thank you for coming. I think that this is really important, that, you know, we have a relationship back and forth, and information and knowledge. I would like to ask if you guys can share the presentation with us, just for future reference, you know, if we have any questions, so that's all.
You have it. We sent it over.
Okay, you guys can send it to us, whoever has it. Thanks.
Councilman Swarth?
Thanks, sir. I saw the news that we've got some upcoming expansions on the airport. I know it's not related to this, but would it be, affect the airport or your capacity or anything like that for rainfall? Can you maybe elaborate on that?
We are in the midst or in the tail end of the completion of an airport master plan, which airports are required to stay current in master plans and their airport layout plan, which is contained, produced off of that document, to remain eligible for federal funding over the years for airport projects. So as we've been working through our master plan, it is reflecting, and in a way, it's the way it works is essentially, the front end of it is kind of an inventory of your current facilities and what they can handle. Then there's a kind of 20-year look ahead and forecast employments and traffic over that period of time. And then, you know, it's not this simple, but essentially, then there's a resolution as to needs five years, 10 years, 15 years down the road to handle the traffic that will be coming. Do you have the capacity to handle that? And if your capacity's short, the master plan will show that and show what you need to develop to handle the traffic that's coming. Our master plan is reflecting a need for, we've been kind of on a high-growth trend, but the country right now is seeing a softening, so it puts us more in the normal trend, but we've been on a high growth. The expectation nationwide is that this softening due to the current environment is temporary, and that folks will go back to their normal growth patterns, and our high, our growth pattern shows a need for 15 additional gates and more terminal capacity, which could drive and will drive a second terminal facility. Now, these are plans, it's a master plan. We don't have a program, per se, at this point, and there's a way to go. We have to complete the master plan, which is, we're probably a couple months from wrapping it, and we'll have the final big public hearing in the August, September, probably about mid-August, I think we've tabbed the date. We'll have that, and then we'll complete the master plan shortly thereafter. And then, really, kind of the work starts, because you have stakeholders involved, if you're going to develop more airport facility, there's costs borne by different entities, so you have to negotiate and work with those entities and get through a process of actually establishing a program and then going forward. So right now, you have a plan, but we'd look to develop a program and phase in the needed capacity in time to meet the capacity needs.
Yeah.
And it would, and we'll be working closely through that process, and as we're completing the master plan and as we're looking to formalize a program, if you will, we'll be working closely with the city of Kenner in terms of potential impact of the airport development and what the needs might be.
Right. I understand short-term, midterm, and long-term plans for the airport. More concrete means more runoff. Anywhere in here to increase pumping capacity, if need be, because four pumps right now are fine for what we have. You start adding more stuff, adding more stuff, we want to have more runoff. Possibly those new pumps or additional pumps could be added in these short midterm and long-term ranges. When you're, we start thinking about, how we wonder what'll grow, okay? Just don't, just don't let the airport grow, let your pumping and how the capacities grow as well.
And again, we will be in close coordination with the city, and also, really, on the sewerage side, is part of the reason we were strongly advocating for support when we were in DC for financial needs to upgrade the sewerage infrastructure in the areas. We know the pressures we'll be putting on that system as we continue to grow.
Thank you, sir, again. Thank you all for commenting. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dunn?
Yeah, just one question, you know, question that I get all the time. Are you at liberty at this time to talk about what you're going to do on the east side where the old airport is?
About what's going to happen with it?
Yes.
Well, there's the older end of the south campus, the ABN, the end where Southwest Airlines was, and where our administrative offices were on the top level of that end. That end will be demolished. The newer end of the old facility, the CDN, will be with us. The de-con course will take charter traffic in and out. One of our largest cargo operators, UPS, has expanded their operation on the airport, and they're consuming a good bit of the west apron off that de-con course facility and administration space down below the facility. We still have our security function in that facility, our communications division is over in that facility, and we've pushed up to where it's more to the west end so that we can go in and demo the east end facilities, hopefully, on that side, and they're tough to recruit, but if we had our druthers, there'd be an aircraft MRO facility developed on that site where the AB concourse goes down. That's a maintenance, repair, and overhaul facility, and hopefully by an air carrier as opposed to a third-party operator. The parabola room, that's the oldest and kind of historic, iconic piece of that whole facility, will be looking to develop into something that's an attraction, potentially for the local community. It's, there's things we can do in that facility in that regard. I touched D, I touched that, I touched the ABN, and the C concourse facility can be repurposed with take-back provisions if that facility is needed for aeronautical purposes down the road. So that's kind of where we are right now, and that'll, that'll develop more over time. But AB is going, that end is definitely going to be demolished.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councilwoman Dunn. Councilman Branigan?
Oh, no, it's my question. She asked my question.
Okay, very good. See no other questions? Anybody?
Chairman, if you want to allow a question for all of us?
It's, I guess, yes, we can, if you got a question. Just, if you will, keep it brief.
Richard Brown, live on Sessions Lane in District 4. And I want to thank both Mr. Kragowski and Mr. Doleo for coming. And I want to give them some kudos, some bouquets, but also some brick bats. I want to say that right after Hurricane Francine, Stacy Alessandro and I attended a meeting of the Aviation Board on behalf of Citizens for a Better Kenner. And both Mr. Doleo and Mr. Kragowski provided us with some good information right after Hurricane Francine at that meeting. And in fact, they stayed for a long time after the meeting, probably a half hour or 45 minutes. And then we talked privately for a long time about the pump station operations. And they were very open and candid and we appreciate it. But then to fast forward several months, almost a year, when it, I think we had heard that the engineering report had been prepared, that we, that we knew was being worked on. We knew they had asked for an engineering report to find out what went wrong. I attended an aviation board meeting to ask, you know, what the report showed, what did they find? Although first I called Mr. Kragowski to ask him those questions. He would not answer them. He said, "All of that is confidential." I said, "What do you mean? Why is it confidential?"
Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown, we're not going to get into those issues at this meeting if, unless the airport director indicates otherwise. But I understand it's something that's, they have claims ongoing and we need to respect that.
I can, I can, I can move forward. At any rate, they clapped down on information, wouldn't release anything. After that report got leaked and made public, then they have come public and have been very open. And again, I very much appreciate it. And my question for them, and I think he essentially answered most of these, maybe not one, and they can pretty much be answered with a yes/no question. And then the first one is, you know, are all of the pumps in working order now? And I believe both gentlemen said yes. And the second question is, is the automatic start function working properly now?
Yes.
And third question, if the automatic start function fails, can they be started manually?
And that was my biggest and primary goal.
And I remember.
Which is to have the manual capability.
And with Stacy Alessandro and I met with them, they both said the same thing, that they wanted to achieve that. And then the last question is, will, will, will the pumps, in the event of a major event, like a major flood event, rain event, like Hurricane Francine, will the pump station actually be physically manned or will it be operated remotely with only technicians on call if needed?
Staff goes out.
Staff will actually be there? Okay. And I think that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. And I appreciate both Mr. Doleo and Mr. Kragowski being here, appreciate the information. I have followed this very carefully, intimately, from the beginning, and I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, for coming forward. Mr. Doleo and Mr. Kragowski, do y'all have any further thing you want to add?
No.
You're good? We appreciate y'all coming in today. Thank y'all very, very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next, Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Next, we have correspondence reports from the mayor, CAO, and department heads.
And I was asked to make an announcement about our youth flag football skills clinic that's taking place next Wednesday, July 30th, at Musburgerlino. It's a free clinic staffed by the Barnable High School football coaches. So I'm sure Councilwoman McKenney would be proud. 6:30 to 8:00 PM at the Ed Daniels Field. It's free and during this clinic, you can sign your children up for our flag football program that starts in August. And on a, I guess, personal note, or not personal note, to jump on Keith Conley, is we've got about two weeks left of summer vacation before the kids go back to school. So it's more traffic, but just be cognizant of the children running around the streets because you know how it happens. Every, every beginning of the school year, we get new parents that aren't used to their routine and in and out of these neighborhoods and lining up with the traffic. But like I said, we have two weeks left of this little traffic and then it's going to be gridlocked once again. So, and that's it.
Do we have any resolutions, motions, or other items from the floor? Seeing none, under the consent agenda, we have item one, approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of July 10, 2025. Item two is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. We have none. Item three is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item 3A is application number 2469-25, the city of Kenner District 1, to hold a public gathering on October 21, 2025, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM for the purpose of a night out against crime event at Susan Park Gym, 502 Veterans Memorial Boulevard. Item 3B is application number 2470-25, the city of Kenner Parks and Recreation Department to hold a public gathering on August 23, 2025, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM for the purpose of a movie night at the Ed Daniels Field, 620 West Esplanade Avenue. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to approve the consent agenda. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Under the public appearance agenda, we have item eight, public hearings and final passage. We have none. Item nine is ordinances for the sale, purchase, transfer, lease, and/or alienation of removable property. We have none. Item 10 is opening of bids. We have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. Item 12A is summary ordinance number 13,901, an ordinance amending Chapter 5, Article 4 of the Code of Ordinances to make needed adjustments to the Kenner flood ordinance. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. Seeing no discussion.
Question? Yeah. Ms. Allen?
No, I didn't know if you had any questions regarding this.
It's just an explanation.
Okay, Catherine is on annual leave. She is celebrating her wedding anniversary, so happy wedding anniversary to Catherine. This is some amendments that we've made to our floodplain ordinance. It's basically housekeeping. There were some definitions that we have the position, however, wasn't denoted in our ordinance. So basically, simple housekeeping as it relates to keeping in compliance with the community rating system.
So no major changes?
No, sir, no major changes. Just defining what a floodplain administrator is and what their duties are.
More?
No, no real substantive changes as it relates to how we enforce our floodplain management ordinance now.
Terminology.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? That's it.
Seeing no further discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Item 12B is summary ordinance number 13,902, an ordinance amending the city of Kenner Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Article 10, Section 10-200, to amend the definition of public gathering and add regulations for private events. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood. Seeing no discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by councilmembers. Item 13A is a resolution accepting and adopting the System Survey and Compliance Questionnaire from the Louisiana Auditor of the State of Louisiana. I have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember Dunn.
No questions.
All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 13,884, an ordinance authorizing the use of State of Louisiana contract 4400032607 with Genuine Auto Parts Company, doing business as Napa Auto Parts for the purchase of automotive parts on an as-needed basis and in an amount not to exceed $150,000 annually for the Fleet Management Department. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood. Seeing no discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 13,885, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from DOM Development Corporation to provide carpentry services, labor only, as needed in accordance with SEAL bid 25-6902 and in an amount not to exceed $300,000 annually for the General Services Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. Councilmember Lahat?
Yeah, I have a question. 15B and 15O are the same department, was like the same contract with the same vendor? It's like Mark Loryosa is coming to the podium. I just wanted an explanation of what, what it meant, doing the ordinance and then the amendment.
Yeah, this one is for the current year contract, '25 through '26. The other one is to raise the cap. We have some outstanding invoices to finish through this year. Right now, we're at about $89,000 in outstanding bills for some projects that he's working on. And we do expect that to go up because he's still working on these projects before the current contract expires. So we want to make sure we have the cap raised to cover the expenses till this contract expires. And the one you're voting on now is the new contract for the upcoming year.
Okay. Councilman Swarth, do you have a question? Councilman Swarth?
We discussed that the other day, Mark, and it was explained. And totally now, now looking at it, we understand what they are since it looks like the same thing again. But keep up the good work.
Thank you. We're trying. I got some good guys that work for us, and ladies.
Seeing no further discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Item 15C is summary ordinance number 13,886, an ordinance ratifying the emergency repair of fire engine 398 located at 400 Vintage Drive by Industrial Fire and Apparatus LLC in the amount of $42,402.82 for the Kenner Fire Department. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood. Councilmember Sharwood?
Chief, can you explain, put the repairs on the engine or?
Yes, it was, we had a small fire here in the engine compartment of the apparatus. So we had to do emergency repairs on it and it should be back in service by the end of next week.
Imagine it was electrical fire, electrical cause?
Well, we believe it was a fluid leak, hydraulic fluid leak that leaked on to one of the components and started the fire.
Oil?
Oil.
Was it coming from the engine that probably went on the exhaust and probably ignited?
Yes, but it damaged some electronic components in the engine compartment.
Wow. When was the last time 398 was serviced? Before the fire? What was the last time 398 was serviced before the fire? Had nothing to do with the PM, with the oil leak or anything like that? It had nothing to do with?
No.
I'm sorry, Jason?
It was a hydraulic leak that came from the hydraulic generator, PTO-driven generator. It was a small leak that formed, it was prior to like-
Hose broke or whatever?
Correct.
All right, okay, good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilman Lahat? No?
Seeing no further discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Item 15D is summary ordinance number 13,887, an ordinance approving the use of state contract 4400031750 with Precision Delta Corporation for the purchase of various types of ammunition on an as-needed basis at a cost not to exceed $100,000 annually for the Kenner Police Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. Seeing no discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Item 15E is summary ordinance number 13,888, an ordinance approving a cooperative endeavor agreement with the, for the donation of a Luna playset by Thomas and Jean Brett to be installed by Pelican Playgrounds LLC at the Rivertown Science Center. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Seeing no discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Item 15F is- An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from the Sound Source LLC to furnish and install new PA system at Musburgerlino Football Stadium in accordance with electronic bid 25-2169 and in an amount not to exceed $45,513.98 for the Parks and Recreation Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes, we are changing the sound system at Bertolino, several reasons. The one that we have is really outdated. And also since we are able to play movies on the big reader board that Representative Vilio got for us, this sound system will be better and it will sound a lot better at the playground in the stadium. It'll be great for the football games and there's a lot of things that are happening at Bertolino's football field where Councilmember Bohannon helped me in paying for the new visitor bleaching that adds basically 947 seats on the visitor side. The reason it was important is because the new bleachers are raised, the other ones were ground level and the first four or five rows you couldn't see. So basically, Bertolino Playground, the football field's getting a facelift and I'm working on some other stuff on the home side also. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, and he's not going to say he's funding this sound system. But like I said, it takes a lot to, by the end of this current fiscal year, in the last, I guess, since I've been in office, we've, we've put over $2 million in Musburgerlino. And the funding is from our own funding, council funding, parish funding, and state funding from Vilio, Bohannon. It's a lot of upgrades at Bertolino and as Natalie Newton would say, and I guess, I think Councilman Branigan was out there for this past baseball season where they had kids absolutely everywhere. So it's finally starting to take root and building from the ground up with this baseball program. We know we have hundreds of kids playing in Jefferson Parish, but things like this, these parks are coming back. You see later on, we have a final, we're going to part of a demolition for another gymnasium. The Woodlake concession stand, it's long overdue. And that, you know, we struggling with trying to get through these lawsuits and insurance monies to put this back, you know, repair it and put it back into, into use. But thank you for the money. Do you want to put your name on it or something like that? No? I'm still alive, so. No, and thanks, Mayor. I appreciate you working with me and your administration to be able to get things done. And the baseball season being held at Bertolino on my fields behind the gym were incredible this year. The parents were really happy that they went to one place to watch softball, T-ball, and baseball. They were walking back and forth to the different fields to see all of their children. So it worked out really well. The director, Mr. Alon, and the ground crews got those fields in shape and they were beautiful. The press box in the middle of the fields was redone because termites kind of got to it. So everything looks great out there and it's just a move forward to build our recreation baseball and our programs up and it's a great deal. So thanks for your help. I appreciate it.
See no other comments?
All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Item 15G is summary ordinance number 13,890, an ordinance approving amendment number one to the agreement with Simsco Incorporated to provide valves on an as-needed basis to increase the not-to-exceed amount of $75,000 annually for the Department of Waste Water. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Seeing no discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 6-0. Item 15H- Item fifteen H, summary ordinance number thirteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-one. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from FMF Group LLC to provide concrete flatwork services on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid twenty-five dash sixty-nine oh-three and in amount not to exceed $200,000 annually for the Department of Waste Water. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood. Seeing no discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six-zero. Item fifteen I is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-two. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the United States Department of Justice Louisiana Commission on Law Enforcement, award number twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four dash VA dash zero-one dash eighty-five eighty-five in the amount of forty thousand dollars with the City of Kenner match amount of ten thousand dollars for child abuse program for the Kenner Police Department. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Lahat.
Councilman Lahat?
Yeah, Chief Conley. I'm just interested, is this a new program or if it's existing? Explain what it is.
No, it's a longstanding program. It, it provides funding, which is salary benefits for a community care coordinator who conducts and assists with forensic interviews of child abuse victims at the Child, Jefferson Children's Advocacy Center. And we've even went a step further, and we house those interviews, uh, at the Kenner Police Department to better serve Kenner residents, or really any resident on the East Bank, uh, because we realize it's difficult for some of these families to get their children, uh, to the West Bank. So it basically, um, aids us and assists us in our investigations, but it also brings closure and counseling to the families and to the children that are either victims or witnesses of some pretty horrific incidents.
Yeah, the Advocacy Center does a really, really good work. I know a lot of people in that organization that y'all's partnership with them is outstanding. So thank you so much for that explanation.
Thank you.
Yeah. Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just want to say thank you for, to the chief and to the department for, um, in the next series of, of grants. Thank you for pursuing those. Thank you for, um, providing those services to the residents of Kenner. They're very important, um, and we, we know how much the Kenner Police cares about the community. So thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six-zero. Item fifteen J is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-three. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the United States Department of Justice Louisiana Commission on Law Enforcement, award number twenty-twenty-four dash WF dash zero-one dash eighty-six forty in the amount of fifty-two thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars with the City of Kenner match of seventeen thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars for STOP Violence Against Women Investigations for the Kenner Police Department. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Branigan. Seeing no discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six-zero. Item fifteen K is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-four. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the United States Department of Justice Louisiana Commission on Law Enforcement, award number twenty-twenty-four dash VA dash zero-one dash eighty-five eighty-three in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars with the City of Kenner match of, amount of six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for a victim assistance program for the Kenner Police Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Seeing no discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six-zero. Item fifteen L is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-five. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Project One Developments LLC for foundation repair at forty-three twelve Florida Avenue Hispanic Resource Center in accordance with electronic bid twenty-five dash twenty-one seventy and in amount not to exceed fifteen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for the Community Development Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Branigan to remove this item at the request of the Community Development Department. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six-zero. Item fifteen M is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-six. An ordinance approving an agreement for professional architectural and engineering services pursuant to SOQ dash twenty-five dash sixty-nine oh-five related to the construction of a new resource facility to replace the former Arthur P. Clay Resource Center for the Department of Federal Program Compliance. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Branigan for approval. I also have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Branigan to amend the item to, in section two, to reflect the amount of four hundred and forty thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six-zero to amend the item. Back to your original.
I'm Chip Verges, Verge Room Architects, and we're really excited to be working on this project. It's going to be a great addition to South Kenner, and, uh, I know it's sorely needed in this area. So I'm, I can answer any questions, but we're just getting started. So I'm sure we'll be back here showing you when we, as we proceed and, um, and get the project moving.
Very good. Welcome aboard, sir.
Thank you very much.
Seeing no further discussion, all council please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six-zero. Item fifteen N is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven. An ordinance approving an agreement with Parish Engineering LLC for professional architectural and engineering services pursuant to SOQ dash twenty-five dash sixty-nine oh-six related to the installation of a generator at the Kenner Food Bank for the Department of Federal Program and Compliance. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Branigan for one meeting deferral. Seeing no discussion on the deferral, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six-zero.
Madam Clerk, excuse me one second, ma'am. I ju, I just wanted to welcome, uh, former city attorney Mike Powells in the audience. Mike, if you will. Mike?
Aye.
Welcome, Mike. We just wanted to say hello. Take a break and work. Thank you for attending, sir. Nice seeing you. Madam Clerk?
Item fifteen O is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight. An ordinance approving amendment number one to the agreement with DOM Development Corporation to provide carpentry services, labor only, to increase the agreement amount by one hundred thousand dollars annually for a total not-to-exceed amount of three hundred thousand dollars annually for the General Services Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Branigan. Seeing no discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six-zero. Item fifteen P is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Innovative Flow Solutions Incorporated to purchase ten wet well mixer systems in accordance with sealed bid twenty-five dash sixty-nine five hundred dollars for the Department of Waste Water. I have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. Seeing no discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six-zero. Item fifteen Q is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand nine hundred. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Grow Environmental and Construction LLC for the Woodlake Playground concession build and demolition in accordance with sealed bid twenty-five dash sixty-nine oh-seven and in amount not to exceed ninety-seven thousand dollars for the Parks and Recreation Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Councilman McKenney?
Um, yes, I just wanted to find out what's the plan for the, like, so when this gets approved, when will we expect the demolition?
Um, there's usually a few more steps that, that go along. I would say you probably won't see movement for another two months.
Two months, okay.
Um, while we get the contract in order and finalize everything. Um, I can certainly keep the council up to date, and we intend to keep the, the public up to date.
Okay, great.
For sure, I know this is a hot topic.
Yes, thank you.
Um, and just to be clear, this is for the concession that's attached and the surrounding press boxes that have been repeatedly vandalized.
Seeing no further discussion, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes six-zero. Item sixteen is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item sixteen A is an ordinance approving an agreement with Pipe Works Plumbing and Demolition LLC for demolition of dangerous building services on an as-needed basis and in amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars annually for the Inspection and Code Enforcement Department. Item sixteen B is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Parets Menswear Incorporated to provide uniform citywide as needed in accordance with electronic bid twenty-five dash twenty-one seventy-six and in amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars annually for the General Services Department. Item sixteen C is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of computer equipment peripherals and related items on an as-needed basis from Apple Incorporated under State of Louisiana Contract Number four-four-four-zero-zero-zero-two-eight-six-seven-three in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars annually. Item sixteen D is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of computer equipment peripherals and related items on an as-needed basis from Somis Industries Incorporated under State of Louisiana Contract Number four-four-zero-zero-zero-two-eight-two-five-two and in amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars annually. Item sixteen E is an ordinance authorizing the utilization of state contract number four-four-zero-zero-zero-two-one-one-eight-nine to purchase data communication products and services on an as-needed basis and in amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars annually for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen F is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Gulf States Distributors Incorporated Roll Rifles and Red Dot Sites in accordance with electronic bid twenty-five dash twenty-one-seventy-seven and in amount not to exceed twenty-three thousand four hundred and eighty dollars for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen G is an ordinance accepting the quote received from Cummins Sales and Service for the emergency repair of two ONAN generators at the wastewater treatment plant in the amount of seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy cents for the wastewater department. Item sixteen H is an ordinance approving an agreement with Garden Maintenance Services in Lake Town in an amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars for the General Services Department. Item sixteen I is an ordinance ratifying an emergency repair of the Fairbanks Morse three-hundred HP vertical turbine effluent pump number three at the Treatment Plant by Fluid Process and Pumps LLC in the amount of one hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars for the Department of Waste Water. Item sixteen J is an ordinance ratifying an emergency replacement of the Myers six-inch fifty HP solids pump number one at Jelby and Osborne Lift Station by wholesale pump and supply in the amount of twenty thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety cents for the Department of Waste Water. Item sixteen K is an ordinance approving an agreement with Capital City Press LLC for the twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-twenty-six recruiting campaign and in amount not to exceed forty-eight thousand dollars for the Kenner Police Department. Item seventeen is reports from the council and our special committees. Councilman Dunn?
I'm sorry. This is where I do the announcement. I just want to announce our back-to-school jam. This is our thirtieth, uh, year that we are actually doing the jam. We have lots of sponsors this year. We're looking for a great time. Uh, it will be this Saturday, that's tomorrow, between two and six, and of course, until the supplies run out. Uh, we're looking to have a great time, just to give the kids something that when they go back to school, they would have a more relaxed type of mindset or whatever. But all is welcome, everything is free, and I just want to thank all the, the sponsors for sponsoring this for us.
Anyone else? I have one. We also have the Lanyup Classic Dog Show. It's next weekend. Uh, Thursday, starts Thursday, July thirty-first through Sunday, August third. So it's not this coming weekend, it's the following, at the Ponch Train Center. There will be a large variety of breeds competing, uh, from mid-morning to late evenings. The participants come from many southern states. It's free to attend, so please consider bringing the whole family to see these dogs compete. This annual event is, is a big economic boom for the city. Our own, the owners, trainers, handlers spend lots of money for lodging, food, gas, and shopping. We truly appreciate them visiting our wonderful city. And as always, we look forward to the organizers of the Lanyup Classic Dog Show returning to our great venue every year. That's all. Thank you.
Next item is new business. This item was taken earlier in the meeting. Item nineteen is unfinished business and are motions to reconsider or removed from the table position. We have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Mr. Teff? Name and district.
Uh, Greg Teff, fifth district. Uh, I just got a couple of things that I want to bring up. One of them is, I want to thank Chief Conley and Kenner Police Department because it, when you go out of policing and start working with victims, that's a lot. And that means a lot of training, extra training, and I commend the department for taking that step because it, I think it means a lot, and it will also help the city. The other thing I want to bring up is there's been some rumblings around that, uh, we have a fire truck here in Kenner that doesn't have a seatbelt working. So what I'd like to do is make sure that, number one, that is that really the case? And number two, to me, if, if it is that way, then, you know, that's, that's a problem because, I mean, I get tickets for no seatbelts because it is a, you're supposed to wear. So I just want to have that addressed so that if it's going to be fixed and when it's going to be fixed, or has it been addressed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teff.
First, I'd like to thank Mr. Teff. He brought this to our attention before the meeting, so I was able to find out the information, get all the information ready for, for an answer. Um, then, our contractor mechanic was already notified of this incident, this issue with the truck, and they're actually going to be here within about two or three hours to fix that. It was previously reported they were waiting on parts to come in for it. So it is being, the seatbelt is usable, it's just not retracting fast and completely. So that's the issue with the seatbelt. So, but it is actually getting repaired today.
So it was usable, it's just?
Yes.
Okay.
From what I'm being, was reported to me, it's just not retracting all the way back.
I understand. Thank, thank you for that. Next, we have Mr. Ryan Nugent. Name and district, sir.
Uh, thank you, Councilman. My name is Ryan Nugent, uh, District Three. Uh, first off, I just want to give a quick thank you for the awesome cleanup, uh, that was just done on Erlanger. Um, myself, along with a number of other residents, have been begging and kicking and screaming for some of that for years. Um, so specifically, they came in, they trimmed a lot of the trees, um, cut back, uh, cut some dead trees, uh, just made the whole thing look a lot better than it has in a very long time. Um, so just a big thank you first off for that. So from there, I'm going to read a little bit of an article. Uh, this is, uh, about Chicago, and here we go. As the City of Chicago begins converting more than a quarter million street lamps to high-efficiency LEDs, the light and public reaction hasn't been as harsh as it was seen in cities that were early adopters. The city piloted the LED lights in a handful of neighborhoods beginning in December of twenty sixteen and left public comment open for more than a year. Chicago Department of Transportation Commissioner Rebecca, uh, Scheinfield said it was important to conduct field tests so that both residents and lighting experts could see how these light levels perform. The conversion LED street lamps prompted public backlash in cities like Seattle and New York, where residents complained that the first generation of lights were too bright and bothersome. One critic in New York called them ghoulish and invasive. Some complaints were bolstered by an American Medical Association paper that warned of glare and sleep problems. Chicago hasn't been immune to such criticisms. On a neighborhood forum, residents complained of a painful and piercing intensity of light, but it's rarely muted compared to the contra, it's pretty muted compared to the controversy in other cities. In part at least, that's because Chicago, Chicago's LED lamps are not as intense as those installed in other cities. Streetlights are measured in Kelvin, which designates the color temperature. The earlier generations of LED street lamps had temperatures as high as four thousand and five thousand K. Chicago's will be three thousand K and able to be dimmed remotely during off-peak times, meeting two of the three AMA guidelines. AMA also recommends that LED have, uh, proper lighting shields. Um, those types of considerations are important according to AMA guidance for a couple of reasons. High-intensity street lamps can create worse nighttime glare than conventional lighting, and their blue-rich tone can disrupt, disrupt sleep, sleep patterns. Recent large surveys found that brighter residential nighttime lighting is associated with reduced sleep times, dissatisfaction with sleep quality, excessive sleepiness, impaired daytime function, and obesity. And that is just the list of effects on humans. Now, I know Now, I know many of you have heard me say this stuff before, but the fact is, I've seen in just the last few weeks, it seems like energy has been given, the green light, to start rolling out some of this stuff in our various neighborhoods and streets, and it is every bit as bad as would I have been trying to avoid from the get-go. I don't know why, you know, with all the experts that I've offered and white papers and everything else, we're still where we were on this major issue three years ago. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nugent. Next, we have Mr. Richard Brown. Name and district.
Thank you, Mr. President. Richard Brown, Living District Four. I wanted to follow up on the comments I made earlier regarding the airport pumps and to say what I did not say earlier. And I very much appreciate both airport officials being here. I appreciate their openness and their candor, that they were very candid with Stacy Alessandro and me when we met with them immediately after Hurricane Francine. They're very candid and open and honest now, but there was an absolute clampdown on information when they got the engineering report and even before they got it. And they refused to say diddly squat about what the problem was, whether it had been fixed, what did the report say. It wasn't until the engineering report got leaked and a TV station and other news outlets published it, that then they started talking about it. I'm glad they did, and now they do talk about it openly. But I want this council and the administration, and I don't think, I think they already are aware of this, know to watch for the airport officials to suddenly just issue a blackout on information and not tell us anything. They claimed the information in that engineering report was confidential and that it had to be confidential for security reasons. There's nothing security-related about it. It's, the whole pump system at the airport was a mutual undertaking with a memorandum of understanding between the City of Kenner, Jefferson Parish, and the Aviation Board. All the plans are public, the diagrams, the plans, everything about it is public record. Jefferson Parish just publishes everything about its pump operations. You can go to the Jefferson Parish website and watch the video on exactly how the pumps operate. So for the airport to try to claim this was so sensitive and that it was, you know, for security reasons, they had to keep it confidential, it's absolute baloney, it's hogwash. I hope you never let them get away with that again. But to move forward, again, I appreciate the fact that now they are being open and transparent and have come forward, and I hope that continues. Maybe it's because the legislature passed that resolution asking them to do so. Maybe they got public pushback. I don't know why, but I'm glad they did it. And I have studied this issue closely, and I agree with everything they said today. I think the airport pumps are in order. I think the problems have been fixed. The station is manned, they can run the pumps manually. I don't think what happened during Francine will happen. It may happen again someday, but it won't happen with the next rainstorm. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Anybody like to add anything? Yes, Councilman Swarth?
Thank you, Council President. I've got a couple of things I got to say here. I hope I'm not limited to three minutes, but I want to say kudos to Mark Loriosa, Mr. Chris over here, for, I actually get me some information and the next day wasn't even noon, and he got the information for me. Thank you for jumping on it so fast. And Mark over there for any projects I got, you and your team are already on it with Lightning Speed. And Ms. Amy, hi. I wanted to thank you and Ms. Catherine for the continuing with the Bayou Oak Food Park. I got a message from Mr. Luna, if you don't mind me reading it. It says, "On behalf of our team, we would like to say thank you to every single one of you for your support, patience, and assistance and positive feedback throughout this permitting process, especially to the late," I'm going to add, "great," Wendell Dufour. Wendell put us on the right path from day one and supported this project throughout the rezoning phase. Now we are moved on to the execution of our plans and creating something our community can be proud of. Looking forward to shaking your hand during the ribbon-cutting ceremony. I talked to Mr. Juan, and he will be setting something up soon for ribbon-cutting out there. He's gathering all his equipment right now, and they're going to start some kind of groundbreaking very, very soon out there to get that food court going. I understand that some citizens don't like the idea of food court, but it's going to be really, really nice. If you haven't seen their presentation, you got to get with me, and it is a beautiful, it's going to be nice, very, very nice, out there with all the trailers, the vendors, a spot that where you can go and get all different kinds of food in one spot. It's going to be really nice. Something I'd like to say is our Kenner East Bank Little League, they have won the Louisiana Tournament, and they are headed to Waco, Texas to represent us in the Southwest Regionals. That's going to be coming up. Congratulations to them for getting this far, and the best wishes for getting to the finals on that. And last but not least, Council President, sir, can you please stand? Ladies and gentlemen, it's usually a tradition that the outgoing president presents the new incoming president with something. And Tom, this is what we call, not a mallet, not a hammer. It's a nice gavel set that I got, Tom, got his name on here, and sir, for you.
Thank you, thank you, Council. Thank you. Very nice. Thank you. Anybody else have any comments?
I gave Dee flowers. I think Ronnie outdid me when we switched.
Okay, very good. I'm saying a motion. Word, John.